All right, are we online and operational?
Yes.
We've had an.
Correct, seven one P M.
Okay, seven one P M on Monday, February sixth. Going to my computer, February meeting in Narberth when the commission's called to order. Um, let's see, folks, we're gonna start our meeting, folks, folks. Folks? I'd like to start. No one's ever had so much fun at planning a commission meeting. I gotta give you credit, I gotta give you credit for that. But we wanna get started, so, um, all right, so, um.
You killed it.
Yeah, I know, I'm just a party pooper, I really am. Look at that, you're probably quite a better party. Um, in any case, um, I would like to note for the record that, um, present are all planning commissioners except is Michael online? I can't tell.
Yes, I'm on here.
Greetings, Michael.
Hello.
The members of the planning commission are present, including our new alternate planning commissioner. Uh, we have three members of the public in attendance and also online, we have Kevin Walsh. Um, who else is online, uh, tonight? I can't see.
Doctor.
Or me?
Doctor Sapola.
Okay, remember the public?
That's all.
Okay, and we are also joined by Chloe Moore from Montgomery County Planning Commission. So here we are. Um, we have a very brief agenda today, we're gonna try and see if we can get done as fast as we can get home and. Pre-coop rate with Super Bowl. Pre-coop rate with the Super Bowl. Um, I'd like to start with an update, Samantha.
I'm not, I'm not.
She told me this afternoon, she was like.
She might, she might. Um, I'd like to start by, by way of updating, by welcoming our new planning commissioner, alternate planning commissioner. Uh, on the internet there is, uh, Michael Galzini, who's our new planning commissioner. And with us tonight is Jennifer Iaccone.
Iannico.
Iannico, sorry, I'm tired, I still can't say it.
It's pronounced exactly opposite of that, should be.
Uh, who's the new alternate planning commissioner? Um, so I would first, um, ask if you could say a few words about yourself and then I will describe to the commissioner what an alternate planning commissioner is, who is the new role. So, Michael, welcome, can you, I know you've met most of us already, but would you mind introducing yourself?
Yeah, um, thank you, first let me say I apologize that I'm not there in person tonight. I had a, a pre-existing commitment for this week before I knew that I was gonna be appointed to planning commission, but I will be really excited to be here in person at our March meeting. Um, I'm Michael Galzini, I'm super excited to be serving with you all. Um, I'm from the, I'm from Narberth originally, um, and, uh, and now a homeowner in Narberth, kind of came back the long way around, uh, spent about ten years in, um, Austin, Texas. Have worked for most of my career in land use zoning and municipal policy generally. Um, and, uh, just kind of really, uh, really excited to, um, to be joining you all. I know I've met most of you all in person and the folks that haven't got a chance to meet in person yet, be excited to, uh, meet at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for being here tonight. Jennifer?
My name is Jennifer Iannico, um, I am also very excited to be a member of this board as an alternate. Um, I grew up just outside of Concha Hocken in Plymouth Meeting. Um, went to Marion Mercy, spent a lot of my high school time in Narberth. Um, have spent the last five years in Philadelphia, various neighborhoods. And my husband and I just relocated and purchased a home across the street, actually. Um, my background is, I'm an architect, I'm a registered architect licensed in three states. Um, and I have, I started off practicing in affordable housing and, um, mixed-use commercial multifamily development. Uh, moved into the real estate development sector and have now had experience in, um, on the development side, project management of multifamily, um, mixed-use commercial, industrial, medical, and hospitality. Um, so kind of run the gamut over the last two years is the types of projects and scales of projects.
Okay. So, let me, um, let me say word about alternate planning commission, I don't think we've ever had one before. Um, but state law does allow councils to appoint alternate planning commissioners. And the role of the alternate planning commissioner is to cast votes in circumstances where a planning commissioner is absent or when a planning commissioner is present unless you accuse themselves of voting on a particular matter. Sometimes we have conference of interest or for certain reasons we, we don't vote on something. And so in that case, the alternate, uh, the alternate can vote. Um, it's especially important, of course, if we're down a few, we need to make a quorum, the alternate gives us a better chance of making a quorum. Generally within the power. But the real reason we have an alternate planning commissioner is because when we had a vacancy, which we stepped down, we had, we had two applications, uh, from these, from these folks here. And, um, I thought that we had two really terrific choices. Um, that it would be a shame for people who had such experience in talent not to be appointed to planning commission. Um, and that, you know, expecting sometime in the future, there might be more turnover on the commission, it would be good for them both to be involved. Um, especially because we have a busy year of development reviews. And, uh, I think both, uh, Michael and Jennifer have a lot of experience on that side of the point. And I thought it'd be valuable to have both of their experience in the mix. And what a better way to learn about the planning commission goes. Um, to be involved with the conversations and then potentially, um, step into any vacancies that may occur. And so I communicated this to council, expressed a desire for both to be on the commission. Uh, and this was, um, council's solution to that. I've been having even number of, uh, members on the commission, they decided to create a position of alternative. So, um, I think I would like to approach this with the spirit that Jennifer really is a member of the planning commission, except for when it comes time to vote. I would like Jennifer to be involved in our conversations, our deliberations, homework assignments. Um, and so I hope you will, except for really as, as one of the group. And overlook the fact that we're still gonna get some votes out of this group. So, um, um, I hope, um, I, uh, I hope, I hope that that will help us along with, with projects we will be looking at this year. Um, let's see, I don't believe I have anything else, uh, by way of update myself. I know, um, I believe Dave, I asked, do you like to update us about Sworthmark? If you'd be willing to do that. Oh, okay, not right now, but later in it.
Sure.
And then, um, I've asked Samantha Bryant, uh, to update us on Station Circle, if she can attend the meeting. Particularly the, um, I guess, I guess it will be, it'll be featured in a conference, a conference session at the American Planning Association Conference in April in Philadelphia. Um, but there might be other news as well. Um, I believe that is it in terms of updates. Um, so let's move on to review, we'll get back to that minute. So let's move on to review of minutes. Um, I did circulate the minutes this afternoon, so I don't know if that's enough time for anyone to look at them. Um, has anyone looked at them or any questions, comments? Uh, do folks feel ready to vote on the minutes at this point?
I have one comment that, uh, is hard for Dennis.
It's also supposed to be.
Came late.
Okay.
Couldn't tell us if the recording, I didn't drop it out, so I had Dennis written down with his last name and everything.
Okay.
We can add him to that.
So we can then reflect that Dennis was there.
Yeah.
Okay, Dennis, my turn, show us the point. Any other comments or corrections?
I mean, I just found that, oh, I'm sorry.
I can't really hear you over the polarity. I don't know what your little meeting consisted of. Must have been good.
It's nice that they're all making friends with their neighbors. It's great.
This is good, this is what we wanna encourage.
Would somebody like to go ask them to go downstairs or?
No.
I'm fine with it myself. Um, so, do you have a comment, question about the minutes?
They're so minor, but, um, solar panels, S O L A R. Just spell.
There might be, there's other experience, spell chair rock as well.
Okay.
Actually, this keyboard, I don't like this keyboard very much.
I don't think there'll be any confusion about that, but J O U L E power is actually J O U L E.
That makes sense.
Okay, just a second, just, I mean, it, again, it's not content specific, it's.
Yeah, that's why that, you guys need to spell names out, otherwise.
I might have spelled it out.
You know, there's more than one way to spell there.
Any other comments or corrections? Uh, would anyone like to make a motion about the minutes?
I would motion that the minutes, the minutes, the changes.
Okay, so motion to accept the minutes as submitted by, the corrections that we've already identified. If anyone cares, second that motion. Second measure, call of day, approving motion. Those minutes are approved. Jen, I did, I forgot to ask, did you wanna provide an update about the community grid today?
Just, yes, yes, sure, sure.
The next, um, item of business is election of officers, which as you know, um, we normally do in January, but we deferred that because we did not have a full contingent of planning commission members. I thought it was better to elect officers when we have, uh, need to appointments from council seat. Um, so we have three officers, um, to, uh, to elect. We have a chair, we have a vice chair, and we have a secretary. And I have done enough due diligence to find people who are willing to accept those positions. But I've not exactly done enough due diligence to have nominators for all those positions. Uh, so I think let's, let's start with secretary. Um, I would like to ask, if anyone would like to make a nomination for secretary?
I'd like to make a nomination for secretary.
Yes, sir.
I would like to nominate Jennifer Kaskyion as secretary of planning.
Jennifer, do you accept that nomination?
I accept. And Adam, thank you for pronouncing my name correctly, like, that is impressive. That is truly impressive. Doesn't happen.
Not me, Jennifer.
I am not, it never, nobody.
Can you spell it correctly?
I have been spelling it correctly.
Could you say it one more time?
Definitely practice. Okay, is there a second for that nomination?
I second that.
Okay, is there any discussion, any other nominations for secretary? And all in favor of planning director Jennifer Jessica as secretary for the coming year? All in favor of that nomination?
Aye.
Opposed, with gratitude, thank you, you are secretary. Okay, so in terms of vice chair, I will make a nomination. Um, and I would like to nominate Adam Acquon as a vice chair for the planning commission for the coming year. Um, is Adam, would you accept that nomination?
I will accept.
Thank you. Is there any second for that nomination? Any, any discussion? I would like to enter a clear discussion, we cannot nominate Adam and elect him chair without expressing gratitude to the borough for not just serving as chair for the past few years, but for all of his years to serve us through the, uh, to playing commission. And, uh, um, um, I know you'll be, you continue to be with us, you have some time with a new term, but, um, your leadership over these years has, has been, not, not just sort of organizational leadership, but, but your, your kind of consistent, uh, approach to the way you think about the borough and the way you, you, you know, challenge us to, to really remember where we came from to get to where we are today has been, has been vital, and so we wish to, I'd like to acknowledge that to everyone. So thank you.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
So all in favor of, um, Adam serving as vice chair?
Aye. Aye.
Adam, thank you for doing your voice, sure. It's often the uncomfortable moment when we need nominations for chair.
I would like to nominate Todd Bressi for another term, as the chair.
One year term.
One year term.
Thank you. I will accept the nomination. Is there a second?
I second.
Dave's second. Any special, are there other nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
So, so we now have a new slate of officers. I'll be chair, Adam will be vice chair, Jennifer will be secretary. Thank you. Thank you all for, uh, stepping into, uh, into roles of leadership. Much appreciate it. You've actually both had roles of leadership of sorts in the past couple of years.
And thank you, Todd.
My pleasure. So we will, um, now move to our updates, we'll start with Montgomery County Planning Commission.
Yes, I'll just introduce myself, hi, Jennifer, new to the borough. When I came in, but hi, Michael, and. Chloe Moore, I'm a community planner with the Montgomery County Planning Commission. And I am a community planner for Narberth, I'm on a couple of other places. Which means I come here to these planning meetings and work on various, a variety of planning, uh, work in between to help out. Narberth is a small place and there's a staff planner here, so don't play that role, but I play a small role. Anyway, hello, I'm glad to be here and it's nice to welcome both of you to the conference. In terms of updates, we at the county are still working on our countywide comprehensive plan and there is a survey out for the public, which is. Share, anyway, you can go to monaco PA dot org slash monaco twenty fifty and take the survey. And you'll probably get more about that because it's two-year process. In terms of other planning work, uh, we also have a planning contract with Lower Merion Township, even though they have a recent planning staff. And there's an idea between the township and the borough to do an active transportation plan. And I don't know the whole history of where that came from or why that's happening now. It has to do with the Mainline Greenway, which you probably all know more about than I do, but it has a really great website and some good information. It's a low-stress bicycle route that's been created, it goes through Narberth. Actually, there's a couple of different branches of it. And so part of the idea is to really take a good look at that and create a signage plan so that someone riding their bicycle can tell where to go if they wanna stay on Main Street, Mainline Greenway. Um, and look at some key points for, uh, where, so the low-stress bicycle route means that it has, the, the streets are relatively low traffic, pretty easy to ride a bike on already, but there's intersections you have to go through and, and, uh, bigger streets you have to cross. So looking at some of those points, ways to make that safer for bicyclists. This is, this planning effort is still in the, well, what exactly are we going to do and who's gonna do it at this stage? And you'll probably have the opportunity to provide some input. Um, I'm sure you'll have the opportunity to address some input as we're figuring that out. But it's planning staff from the county, um, planning staff for Lower Merion Township, and your borough manager who are having these conversations right now. And there is an idea to, to create some kind of a steering committee to look beyond just the route of the Mainline Greenway, add other possible bicycle and pedestrian connections and improvements. Um, that it's, it's not a well-formed project yet, so there's opportunities for your input even into scope work. Um, I don't think there's necessarily gonna be a formal process to seek your input into that right at this time, but if you wanna talk with me about it sometime, or we can spend a slice of a planning commission meeting, I guess if you felt like that was appropriate, talking about what's important to Narberth and how to make sure that the needs of bicyclists and pedestrians coming and going from Narberth are met and addressed through this planning effort, um, talk to me. All right.
I'll take that question. Yeah, well, all right, and our comment recommendation, I would recommend reach out to P D R P C, probably are planning to do so anyway, but since they have a number of grants and studies and programs that could maybe be some useful material for the.
Yeah, thanks for that, they have some really great tools, analysis tools that they've already provided, um, for pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure and planning, but I should actually talk to them. About what we need, so I'll do that, please.
Okay, any other question? Um, I think probably it'd be good if you'd come back once you have some fully formed agenda or something to get that self-assessed. But I, I suspect given our history, we would like very much to know what is going on. And there may be folks here who are willing to participate in a, in a process, so.
Sounds great, I'd love to, look forward to sharing a scope of work and timeline, things like that, when we have them. Look forward to it, Jennifer, very good.
Thank you. Um, I believe, um, the borough manager has joined the meeting, so.
Yes.
Samantha, welcome to our meeting. Um, we're in the updates stage of a meeting and, um, we would very much appreciate um, if you could, um, fill us in about Station Circle. You sent out an announcement earlier this week about the project being featured at a conference coming up. We'd love to hear about that. Uh, and then any other, uh, news you can share, um, with us and the four members of the public here as well. So I, I can't see where you are.
Yeah, yeah, I'm here. Yeah, thanks for, uh, thanks for having me, uh, here, uh, to join you all for a little bit tonight. And, uh, I'm happy to share, yeah, well, what's going on with that. So, um, just a reminder for everyone here, uh, the project is looking at changing the way that the Station Circle property that the borough owns works to be more, uh, conducive to public gatherings, to be more, uh, pedestrian-friendly. And these are all goals that were set out in the borough's comprehensive plan, uh, back from twenty nineteen. Uh, so, uh, at the January fifth Borough Council Work Session, our planning consultant for the project, Simone Collins, presented two options for the, it's currently called Station Circle, but, um, they refer to it as Station Square. You all may remember the moniker, uh, last summer was square the circle to refer to that sort of shift in how we view the property. And, um, uh, one of the options, um, I encourage anyone to go back and look at that, uh, presentation. Um, both options basically convert the property to a, um, pedestrian-friendly public plaza. Uh, the main difference between the two options presented is whether or not the egress currently from the municipal parking lot is maintained or not. Sorry, this is when my cat eaters go off, if you can hear that. Um. All right, so now that's done. So that presentation was given to Borough Council. Uh, we're awaiting the results of some grants that were submitted. Uh, it was something else talked about with Borough Council last summer and last fall. One is a state multimodal application to the Department of Community and Economic Development. And the other is to the federal government as part of the, one of the programs under new infrastructure bill. So we're awaiting that and, um, in the meanwhile, uh, Simone Collins thought highly enough of what they're doing here in Narberth that they submitted an application to the, um, uh, to the APA, uh, which I believe our planning commission chair is a member of, and I'm sure probably others here on this body probably are as well, uh, for their national conference coming up in Philadelphia this spring, uh, talking about the work they've been doing here in Narberth with the Station Square project and the grant applications and everything we've been doing. And the, uh, APA agreed that it would be a great presentation for planners, you know, all around the country to hear about what we're doing here in Narberth. So I think it's a really great opportunity to share, you know, the really great things that are going on here in the borough and this really wonderful project.
Right. Um, that's, that's great news. So any other questions about where we are with this?
All right, if anyone thinks of me, you know where to find me.
Okay.
Well, I guess I have a question, um, when is the planning commission going to be? Are we gonna be participating in the process? I thought we would.
Uh, I guess I, I guess I defer a little bit to Todd with that. I know that, you know, members of the planning commission, uh, and Jim Cornwell and David Brower have been, uh, you know, involved in, uh, all the communications and the meetings we've had on the project. And I think now that, uh, there have been plans publicly presented and, uh, council has had a chance to see those. If the, um, you know, I defer to Todd as chair, um, but I certainly wouldn't see any issue if the planning commission wanted to make any, uh, recommendations or thoughts on the plans that were permitted, presented by Simone Collins to Borough Council. But, um, otherwise, there's no, um, formal role for the planning commission in the process.
So, these, these designs have been presented to council and there have been grant applications written uh, to do, I believe, the next phase of engineering, right, or engineering or design?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, so does that mean the council has endorsed one of, one of the designs or another? Or is it just sort of endorsed the idea that this should be studied further?
Yeah, I would say that, well, keep in mind, uh, so just, I guess, answer the first question. No, council has not made any decisions about either of the, um, either of the options. Um, number two is that, just a quick reminder, the grants were actually applied for, um, back before we even had, you know, anything close to a finished product. And to your point, yes, they are for, uh, continued study. Uh, in particular, the grant applications focus more on the potential for a, um, for multimodal, uh, pathway connecting North Essex Avenue and South Essex Avenue uh, via a, uh, underpass that would connect, uh, under the railroad tracks.
And we're still waiting to hear about these grants?
That is correct.
Okay. So what, do we know when we're gonna hear?
Uh, we do not, I've heard, uh, we got a notice from the federal government that that grant, uh, last week, we got a notice that, uh, within the coming weeks will be when we know about that grant. So, I don't know, my take on that is by the end of March, probably. And with the, um, with the state grant, um, I've heard different timeframes for when that might be. I had been, uh, originally the fall process would be, that grant would be decided in mid-January. And it's looking like now with, um, you know, just, uh, you know, new folks involved in the state government and, um, and, uh, and the state legislature and all that, it might not be for a little bit later as everyone kinda, you know, gets acclimated and settled in and hares for X for this year.
Well, at first we know Josh DePiero has come to our bridge, so he's.
He crossed the bridge.
He crossed the bridge with Bob King. Uh, anyway, um, so has, has Borough Council given any formal feedback on, on the studies so far? Or did they just present it and that was that?
Yeah, it was more they just, they just, there were a handful of minor comments from, uh, Borough Council, but it really was just, um, uh, it was just, that was the, the, in terms of the timing of meetings and all that sort of thing, that was, uh, the meeting where they presented that and there really hasn't been further, uh, dialogue, uh, with Borough Council since then on it.
So when the project picks up again, um, hopefully, when the project picks up again, um, will there be like a very early step of collecting in a more formal way? Feedback on the, on the, on the proposals they've made?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I could certainly talk to Borough Council about that.
Okay. And then I guess the question is, is Borough Council, the planning commission, what would be the right venue for that? Uh, but whenever that occurs, that would be an opportunity to weigh in. So.
Do we have scenarios of, of how we proceed if we get the grants and if we don't get the grants? Is it clear to you, to you, what happens if we don't get these grants?
Uh, yeah, if we do get the grant, uh, then yes, then I, uh, you know, know what our path forward is with that, with talking with Simone Collins. Uh, if we don't get the grant. If we don't get the grant, then I think probably, you know, I would have to talk a little bit with, I'd want to talk with you and the other folks on the Planning Commission as well as with Simone Collins. But I think that probably the path forward is at that point, we're really just focusing on, you know, the construction of the improvements outlined for, you know, Station Square itself. And we're probably not pursuing anything related to the Essex Avenue tunnel idea.
All right. Well, I hope you'll keep in touch and when, if and when the Borough is notified the grants are received, we can talk about what's the best way to make sure Simone Collins gets some feedback before they really start the next phase of design work. That would be, whether it's a councilor here, that would be the best way to get some input before they get started.
Yeah, I was going to say, Todd.
Thank you.
All right, hope everyone has a good night. Thanks for having me.
Thanks for taking the time to join us.
Good night.
Okay, two more things, let's do this real quick. Dave, since you were our emissary just worth more last month, would you mind just sharing for a minute with the Planning Commission what you did and what you learned?
Yeah, briefly, last year at some point, representatives of a committee that was formed in Borough of Swarthmore reached out to us because they were looking to explore the possibility of doing some kind of a historic district ordinance, because they had several historic properties that were threatened with demolition. And I think initially, Jim Cornwell and I met with them in Swarthmore, and then they seemed to have gone away until late last year when they recontacted us and told us that they were now geared up again to start their process. And so Kathleen Alton out from the Conservancy and I went out to Swarthmore, met with this committee, and had a pretty free-willing hour discussion with them about what our experience was in Norbert and putting together the historic district ordinance. And turns out that many of the issues that they're confronting in Swarthmore, which is in Delaware County, not Montgomery County, although I'm not sure that's too relevant. But they were dealing with many of the same issues that we've hashed through over the past years, building usage, height limitations, the degree of, the degree of compliance on how historic district ordinance would be, would be used. All these things were things that were of great interest to them. They followed up with having a site visit to Norbert to walk around and to actually see what, what the physical realities that we were dealing with are. I unfortunately could not meet with them that day. Kathleen went through the walk with them, fairly was successful, and they went away to start dealing with the ordinance in a more concrete way. I've not heard anything since then, but as far as I know, they've profited from their experience with us in the off and running.
Thank you, thanks for taking the time.
It was fun. Fun talking to them.
Did you want anything about Norbert by talking to them? Thank you. And Jen, is there any news about the community irrigation process that you would, for renewable energy, or are things pretty much?
You know, I think, I'm comfortable saying that things are as they were, that they are, we have an implementation plan on the table with the Council, and next steps are in the works.
This is the community choice irrigation process for renewable energy?
Yes.
Access to renewable energy, okay. Thank you, everyone. So let's move on to the rest of our agenda, which consists of some minor points about the zoning revisions that we discussed last year. So you all know, we worked on several zoning revisions. We worked on zoning updates to bring the zoning code into consistency with our new subdivision and lay development code. Chloe really led that charge and in December, we recommended that Borough Council move forward with turning those revisions into an ordinance. We also worked on zoning provisions for green buildings, which would entertain certain buildings approved through conditional use process. In November, we recommended to Council, the Council turned that into an ordinance. We also recommended changes to 5B district to allow for apartment buildings, and in November, we recommended to Council. And so what normally happens after that is Solicitor and Chloe, they look at those recommendations and begin to think about how to put together and do an ordinance. And in the course of that work, we're trying to get more thorough about catching things and catching questions and correcting things before we actually get an ordinance drafted, to save us trouble at the end. And the Solicitor and Chloe did a review and came up with some questions. Most of them were very technical. I try to answer them as much as I can, particularly when the intent of the commission's been pretty clear, and it's just sort of like pointing out what we're thinking. But in some cases, they've raised a couple of questions that I think are worth bringing back to the commission. In addition, we have been, as a group, talking about whether it's necessary to change zoning rules related to solar panels, and particularly Jen and Heidi have been thinking about that over the last month or two, so that's a little bit of a loose end too. So I circulated a list of seven items that have come up. I would like to, five of them have to do with green building, one has to do with the salad, and one has to do with the 5B zone. I would like to table any discussion of the 5B zone for the time being, if that's okay with you, and like to add another topic that Kevin Walsh has brought to our attention, a question about the interpretation of accessory dwelling unit code in relation to no-impact home businesses and whether those, how those relate to accessory dwelling units. Kevin has, receives some questions and run into some interpretive questions he would like to discuss with us. So I'd like to add that to the agenda if that's up here. So it still brings us back to seven topics, and those are the only topics we have tonight. And I really hope we can focus and zoom through because they mostly relate to things we've already talked about. So let's start with solar panels. Heidi and Jen have been kicking this back and forth, and I took the emails we've been exchanging and turned them into a one-page paper that I emailed to. I'll quickly read it for the folks at home. Background of this discussion is that Norbert zoning code currently allows for solar panels that are flush to a roof, on any roof in any zoning district. Our question is, is there a need to provide more flexibility in those rules so that people can install more efficient solar panels? And if so, how can we allow for more flexibility while preventing egregious examples that would contravene the intent of the Form 8 code? So in the past few months of research, we've learned that A, this hasn't really been an issue, there haven't been any requests to the Borough Office about this topic, and B, as far as we can tell, the efficiency losses by having planned solar panels flat to a roof aren't that great, while efficiency losses to the orientation houses might be greater, but there's nothing we can do about the orientation house. So the proposal for discussion is, has three parts that has come out of the research and conversation. And so what I'd like to do is discuss this and see whether or not there's consensus or support for it. First, amend the zoning codes out so that for buildings with flat roofs, with flat roofs, buildings with flat roofs, the installation of solar panels at any angle should be allowed, with the observation that most flat roofs have parapets that would likely shield them from view of the ground. Number two, amend the historic district ordinance so that the HARB, the Historic Architecture Review Board, can review and issue a certificate of appropriateness for solar installations that require the removal of roofing or other building elements, and removing something to put the solar in, are physically located in the first or second lot layer and are visible from the public right of way. And you all know, those three criteria pretty much match the general criteria for where the HARB gets involved with things. So that would just clarify that if something's being removed, if it's, happens to be in the first or second lot layer, it's visible from the public right of way, it involves a solar panel, the HARB can, and it's in historic district, the HARB can review it. And thirdly, amend historic district ordinance so that if a solar panel is approved for the first, is proposed for the first or second lot layer, and is visible from the public right of way, an advisory HARB review would be required. Remember, that's just an advisory consultation, it's not a permission. So that's a three-part proposal, and so I put that on the table for discussion. Anyone like restatement, clarification, questions, comments?
It looks like the first line on here was written as a question. Norbert zoning code allows solar panels that are flush to a roof on any roof in any district.
That's what they call, that's what they call in old-fashioned terms, a technical area.
Okay, that's fine, because I was wondering if it was a question about what the code currently says, because I was like, maybe no.
On the same sentence, it says flush to a roof, which is certainly not true. Parallel to the roof would be a better term.
And there's like, what, eight inches or something?
The goal here is to have them look like a White Sports House, where they're flush to the roof, where they're parallel with the roof, and they are not elevated more than they absolutely have to be, close to the roof, yeah. What is close to the roof?
Eight inches.
Eight inches, inches, within eight inches. So we're not, I don't want to rediscuss that.
That's good, that's fine.
So the proposal has to do with flat roofs, essentially, or solar installations that require removable things, or are visible, or advisory. Thank you for the clarification of what the code actually says.
For flat roofs, I don't think it's enough to say that, well, most flat roofs have parapets, because many, many flat roofs don't in fact have parapets. I would like to see something to the effect that they could be mounted at any angle as long as they're not visible from the adjacent streets, from the public right of way. Yeah, but I think, I'm not sure, if you say just the public right of way, that's way too general, so if you're four or five blocks away and because of the angle you're happening to see them, I think that would be onerous. But I think from the adjacent right of ways, they shouldn't be visible.
Can I repeat what the code says?
Yes, please.
Solar panels or solar water heating shall be mounted parallel to the roof plane and less than eight inches above the roof on pitched roofs. In the case of flat roofs, solar panels and solar water heating equipment shall not be mounted more than six feet above the roof, provided that it is not visible from the street. That's what the current code states, just for the information.
So it would allow any angle?
It looks like it would allow any angle, and Dave, I do, what you were just saying about provided it is not visible from the street is what's written in there, and it's not very specific, like what exactly is visible from where, on what street.
Chloe, I think the right-of-way terminology comes from the historic district ordinance, so they're kind of conflicting in that sense, but I agree, they both need to be changed to be more clear. Is it, if you're standing on a ladder, is it, if you're, it can be ridiculous. And it's actually negatively affected one of our reviews because of how vague it is.
When you say clean it up, what are you, what would your suggestion be if you clean it up?
Something to much of the way things are worded in the historic district, so instead not visible from the street, use the term public right of way and define that, and then maybe something about adjacency, I don't know, Kevin, you look like you have an idea?
Well, the goal is that nowhere in the street does a pedestrian have the ability to see the thing. And that includes the far side of the street, the middle of the street, or the near side of the street, for a pedestrian who's standing, you know, outside walk or in the street, whose eye level is, you know, within the range of normal human physiology. You know, that's what we're trying to accomplish, so that when you walk down the street and you look up across the street, you don't see the paraphernalia on the roof. You already see antennas and satellite dishes, that kind of stuff.
But Jen, you used the White Sports residents as an example. Clearly, the solar panels are visible.
Yeah, but that's a pitched roof.
Yeah, we're trying to, oh, we're trying to hold it up, okay.
So in order to, in order to permit the beneficial use of solar panels, which I think we are all in favor of doing, we have to draw the lines on them, and the goal is to draw the line somewhere this side of, you know, building a Jetsons environment. What was it called, Orbit City, is where the Jetsons live, if you remember. We don't want to have Orbit City here in Norbert.
Is that acceptable to everyone?
It seems like the only change being imposed is to clarify.
What it means to be in the street. Right. Okay. Kevin, if that's clarified, would that solve the issue that you've done with?
I think the one concern I have is, I think there are allowed to be different terminologies between the zoning code and the historic district, because solar panels are obviously elevated, whereas what I'm looking at from the HARB from a building perspective can be blocked by a fence, that's normal. So I think we can use different terminology, but I think we need to, you know, get them cleaned up from that perspective, yeah.
Chloe, do you think you have enough of a grasp on this that you can provide language?
Yeah, Kevin, can I follow up with you on this one?
Yeah.
Sorry?
Okay. I think our intent is clear. If you can put it in language, that would be great.
Basically, in terms of the zoning, the existing language is basically what you want, but just make, clarify it so that it's. Do you want to add any? Okay, yeah, I'm good. I'll bring you some dry language next time.
Okay. And then the two other parts of this proposal are to clarify the HARB's role, the review of solar panels. Again, it requires certificate appropriateness for solar installations that require the removal of something to put them on in the first or second lot layer or is visible from the public right of way, and then require advisory HARB review if, whether or not they're removing something, but if they're in the first lot layer or second, or excuse me, first or second lot layer in the public right of way, which is also consistent with the way the HARB, the historic district ordinance is set up now. Jim and Jen, as members that have cross-affiliation, how does that strike you?
Let's try for a year and see how it goes. I mean, I can anticipate that depending on the orientation of a house in relation to the, to the sun, you have a house facing south, facing the street and facing south, you're going to have a situation where that's the place you want to put the panels, because that's logical, solar angle of incidence perspective. So why is a, a HARB review, aren't we just going to be spinning our wheels to review that situation? Well, I'm a bunch of them. You know, we're, we're, we've got a bridge here that is in town mostly, and so it's predictable that about 25% of houses would have panels facing in the southerly direction, and to have advisory HARB review about that might be onerous. But let's see, I mean, let's try. As a point of clarification, I have seen an astounding number of houses
As a point of clarification, I have seen an astounding number of houses with a north-facing roof that have solar panels on them.
You know, technology marches on, Dave.
I, I don't know if.
It must be the Chinese weather balloon is reflecting the sunlight.
I don't know if they work on the north face, I don't know if they're just a product of bad advice, but you will see them on every exposure.
The aforementioned Whiteboard residence has panels facing north.
Okay, well, there you go.
And they're just less efficient, that's all.
As the other HARB crossover, what is your?
I would, I mean, I'm in agreement, I would only add that, I said that, you know, I sent today, I'm not going to be had a chance to look at it quickly, but basically it's just showing how the technological advancements are becoming just like, solar panels are hard to even discern, you know, with solar panel glass, solar panel plaque, solar panel shingles that are, you know, I mean, so that's, I'm just reinforcing, I'm in agreement, let's see what people are coming forward with and how we need to handle them.
That's why I suggest we try, and just see, yeah, see what happens.
I think it sounds great, because I think people can ju, they're presenting a plan for a permit, and it just is an extra step to, no one, you don't even have to get it together, maybe just email to members of the advisory group and you can, I mean, it is a learning curve, as you say, I mean, I looked at your website, I mean, railings and, yeah, I was like, oh, okay.
So Kevin, do you see a downside here?
It actually triggered a thought that happens more frequently with solar panels than any other application, in which I receive a, an application with the diagram for the layout of solar panels, it's on, you know, x-orientation, preferably the south side, the contractors or whoever's the actual installers down in the field, when I go to do an inspection, have installed it on the more appropriate side, you know, they've taken that onto themselves, I'm asking for an as-built drawing, and now they're already installed, right? I'm just making sure an architect's making sure the framing's accurate, now I'm then sending them to the HARB, even though they're already installed. That happens a lot, I would say like, probably 20 to 25% of solar panel applications.
But they're not installing what was permitted, so why are, why are we concerned about that, they should have to.
Yeah, you've got solar panels on our shoulders, and you say, yeah, that's what was different.
Well, I guess the key question is, does this actually improve or change anything? And I believe Jim is suggesting this is an experiment to see what happens, because it may just be a lot of busy work.
In which case, they shouldn't do it, there's nobody to know until you try.
And I don't, if there hasn't been any damage done so far, then what are we improving? By adding more steps?
I'm not sure that's the issue. The issue for me is if the, if the whole approval process is to have any validity, we should be able to depend, to depend on what was approved is what gets built.
Well, that's a code enforcement issue for the, for Kevin, but, you know.
Right.
But, but he's talking about framing and things, that's, you know, structural issue, not a boom.
So that's a good point, let me say as a matter of course, I think what has happened, would happen to this recommendation, is, is I don't think we can a little recommend changes in historic district ordinance, I think we would just refer it to the HARB. The HARB would decide whether it wants to ask council to amend the ordinance, so in a way, this is like super advisement. So we could just say to the HARB, we think there'd be value, if you did try this for a year, then you can assess whether it makes sense or not, and then I think maybe the HARB can give the judge of whether it makes sense or not, because it's really their business at this point. I would be happy to leave it at that.
I, I agree with that, and as Jennifer's email pointed out, and I was looking, the technology for this stuff is changing so rapidly that I suspect in a few years, we're not going to be dealing with hulking panels that get dropped on roofs, and we're going to be dealing with coatings and things that are going to be almost invisible, so.
So what we'll do is, in terms of, there's some classifications to the code related to flat roofs and consistency of language among our different codes, which Chloe will work on, and we'll pass on to the HARB, the recommendation that they consider these steps regarding solar panels, and let the HARB decide whether it feels that should be within scope, that we think it should be considered as a temporary measure for a year and see how it goes. So that, I think, was probably the most complicated topic, hopefully the others can go real quickly, in reviewing green building provisions, the solicitor and Chloe have asked, would we allow, since the green building provisions would prevent fossil fuel hookups, and as Jim pointed out, that in certain cases could be a health and safety hazard, would we allow fossil fuel hookups for emergency generators, or would we allow fossil fuel-powered emergency generators, so that those who cannot live with interruption in power could not have to worry about that?
If you're on a heart blown machine, don't tell me I can't have a gas-powered generator because gas is, classifies as an uninterruptible source of power, and I would not be, want to be the person that told the cardiac patient that they couldn't have the gas-powered backup for their heart, I really wouldn't want to be there, and I don't think we as a community want to be there either. That is certainly an extraordinary situation, and there should be allowance in the law for that kind of thing.
Is everything a concern, is making that provision, as we try to?
I'm generally in favor of lighter regulation, but I am just curious, like, you know, these kind of ideas of changing the, not putting any new fossil fuel hookups in place are coming from other states, mostly in other places, and just curious what they permit. And to the point about emergency power, I know that, you know, battery backups are probably going to become also somewhat common, and I don't know how reliable the gas would be in a true emergency, a long-term emergency, but, but yeah.
Hospitals rely on gas generators because they are deemed to be uninterruptible, whereas no other energy supply is, and you can go long periods of time in a catastrophic weather situation, for example, with gas-fired emergency generators.
Does that apply in an earthquake?
No, it doesn't, nor in a nuclear attack, but in, in, in weather events of the kind that we're likely to experience here in Pennsylvania.
Short-term interruptions are the most common type, it's a reliable backup source.
Gas is the most reliable.
Well, I, I don't know that this is worth our debate, I think just the question is.
I think for now, we should allow.
Should we allow for these hookups, and then let people decide whether it's a battery or gas or whatever it is they feel, just their needs, but would we allow an exception for fossil fuel hookups for people who want emergency systems?
Well, I mean, I just have to raise the side of the argument that if, for example, an environmental advisory council is going for net zero, that is not going to meet net zero criteria.
So are biogas, which is not?
Well, I guess, what about an emergency system does not meet net zero criteria?
Or generating, well, the BRRR is not net zero anyway, it's just regulating new fossil fuel hookups.
Yeah, new, is that what we're talking about?
That's correct, yeah.
I mean, net, net zero would be, we would have no emissions, right, so that, we're still an half some emissions from all the existing ones, right? So.
Well, net, net zero is a new construction, or a new, yeah, a new construction goal.
Yeah, so these, whoever hooks one up wouldn't be net zero.
Well, if they used, but if it was only used in emergencies, which are rare, I'm not sure how that really.
This is like a white paper argument, because it's all kind of.
You should be careful with that term, yeah, because net zero would be up the supply chain, it's a lot of requirements to get to net zero.
Plus you do use it, because you have to exercise generators, usually on a monthly basis, you have to run them for an hour, just to make sure that they're not rusty.
Net zero is a, is like an offset iteration, it basically, it's, some people call it neutrals, some call zero, but it's basically whatever you put in, in one form, you have to take out in the, so it's zero, that's how it's zero, it's not zero because there's none.
But net, there would be none, so that, like you said, you'd have to offset it somewhere else, yeah. Is anyone opposed to allowing, you don't want to allow the emergency generators?
You know what, I'm also not, light regulation is okay, and this, you know, I, I don't have a very strong opinion on one another, I just know both sides of the argument.
You know, my feeling is, whatever recommendation is made is not made forever, it's, it's just a recommendation for now, and I assume as the world moves closer to non-fossil fuel systems, you know, I'm kind of the person who hopes that technologies will emerge that will help tie over interruptions in, 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 in the electrical power system.
Well, they will, they're really.
And at that point, we can then, at that point, we can then change the rules.
I mean, that's the thing, and all of this costs money.
But I think, for now, it makes sense to me, if someone really feels they need an emergency generator.
Yeah, this is, so, I mean, we started, I mean, I've lived in the world close to 40 years, and I can count on my hand.
How many generators?
How many, how many times we've lost electricity for more than a couple of hours, you know, so what are we talking about here? I mean, you know, it's like, we really going to tell somebody that needs, needs power for, for their health that they can't have a generator in that very rare occasion when the power goes out? Are we really going to tell them that?
Yeah, and, and can I also jump in, because having, having lived through a, I lived through a kind of like freak weather event that ended with power being lost to folks all over a city for about a week, and a, it's a scenario where you don't expect it, it normally doesn't occur, but the moment that it occurs, governmental systems that you kind of rely upon are completely overwhelmed, a lot of folks, when you're in your own home unit, you're kind of on your own in that type of a scenario, we don't expect that to occur, it probably won't occur, it's kind of like a, you know, a 1% scenario, but, you know, I can imagine, you know, I was fine as an able-bodied young man who was able to, you know, do everything for himself for that week, but I can imagine that if I were an individual who needed emergency access to something, that would not have, it would not have been easy, so I mean, it is a, it's a low probability event, but it's a high, it's low probability, high risk, I guess, I would say, for, you know, if you're a vulnerable community, just to have that.
Is there, is there consensus to do this, or should we vote on it? Have you, I mean, I sense most of us would agree.
Yeah.
That, okay, just say by consensus, we would, we would allow that, and then, you know, obviously, these, this will all be revisited over the years as technologies change. The next issue is, in green, in the green building code, we, we apply, we apply it to new buildings that are built by conditional use, in a variety of circumstances, if there ever a situation where a new building were being built on a lot where an old building is, would we apply the green building rules to the old building as well as the new building? That was ambiguous in our recommendations, and the solicitor wanted to know, we could clarify that one.
You've got an old building that runs on coal. I mean, it wasn't very long ago that my house had a coal-fired boiler in the basement, before my ownership, but not long before, so let's say, let's back off to oil.
Yes.
Lot of oil-fired boilers on my street, I see the trucks going up and down the street. So somebody builds an ADU on their property that's up to the minute, run by.
It's more like, you know, the ADUs rules say, I think you just, I think they, well, just keep going.
So is it fair to say, if you build the ADU, and it's, and it, and it runs on modern sources of power, that the old building has to be completely renovated and brought up to the modern standard, is that what we're seeing?
That's the question that.
That doesn't seem reasonable to me.
Well, that's going to knock out every, just 99% of the ADUs that would be proposed in the world, because nobody's going to do it.
We just have to supply the new structures now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any objections to that? Okay, so only two new structures.
Would that include ADUs? You'd want to put an ADU in your garage, you don't have to.
The, the rules for ADUs, it's already in the ADU ordinance, what, but excuse me, it's not, it's in the, in the green, it's already in ordinance, it explains what ADUs need to do. I could look it up and tell you.
So, I mean, can I raise?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so ADUs are considered part of the overall square footage of the property?
I'm not sure.
In terms of building coverage? Yeah, well, no, in terms of like, if you have a house, if you, yeah, you have a property, and the total square footage of a house, a property, takes the sum of the ADU and the house itself.
Yes.
And it's just one sum.
Yes, lot covered, all that, you have to include the ADU with the primary.
Wouldn't they be subject to the same criteria for energy?
Well, that's a matter of what we determine.
But we're saying that existing buildings are grandfathered.
If someone.
Yeah, but I think anything, anything that's new construction, and I would also characterize a change in use, like if a garage is changed to an ADU, I would think that that change in use should also kick in the green standards.
Yes, yeah.
Here's what we already recommend for ADUs, ADUs are separate from the other buildings. We already recommended for ADUs is, no hookups for fossil fuels, including but not limited to natural gas and oil. In addition, there, these requirements must be meant for both the ADU and the principal building on the lot. Provide electricity heating and cooling from onsite renewable sources to the extent possible. Acquire electricity from PA state 100% renewable providers, when Norbert Community Choice Program is operational, must participate in community choice. So what, that splits the difference, what it says is, if you're creating a new ADU, no fossil fuel hookups, renewable energy, quoncet energy, renewable energy, community choice program, for the, the mothership, the primary building, you, you're allowed to have a fossil fuel hookup, as most buildings do, but your electricity needs to come from renewable sources, so basically you're just going to create a power switch and you switch from.
Yeah, because that's, that's feasible.
Which we thought was a reasonable trade-off, we're not going to discuss this.
Yes.
And then, when and if Norbert Community Choice is operational, must participate in community choice program, so we felt it wouldn't be right to ask people, reverse engineer existing house, so that was electric, but whatever electric service they had should be renewable, so they're, they're, so that's where we were with ADUs, that's what we already agreed on, so that question only applies to other situations where, say Jim, say your house was historic, is it? I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, so you have a house in a historic district, it's a historic house, you have a huge lot, and suppose you decide to fill in your hole and build a house there, right? And that's something by your lot, but take advantage of having two houses in the lot. The new house, definitely, no hookups, renewable energy, but the old house can retain its coal shield.
Correct.
Touch to the chagrin of your name. Touch to the chagrin of your neighbors.
We burn peat, actually.
Makes you real popular. That's why you have Fourth of July Parliament to compensate for everything else.
That's right.
Okay, so that would, but that's how we, that would not be right to ask Jim if he burned his old house, get rid of his peat box.
No, the dogs have to remain.
Dogs remain.
We just don't burn them anymore.
All right, and so that settles that issue. Next question.
Here is the issue of your barbecue dog.
Charcoal for cats, too, I guess.
I think Chloe raised this issue, which is a really interesting conundrum. So we are, we are saying if you build a new building, you have to be, you have to source your energy from a renewable energy supplier, potentially the borough's community supplier, one day. We're also encouraging you to generate your power on your site from renewable sources, which would largely be solar and renewable. But the conundrum is, if you put a solar panel on a building, and you wanna sell your excess power back to the grid, you can only do that if you acquire power from PICO, I'm told. You cannot do that if you acquire your power from, if I do like Clear Choice or whatever it is. So that's kind of an odd thing. So people who build solar panels, like suppose you're building a new mixed-use building, you're putting solar panels on top. You
You have no way to sell it to
You can't sell it. It's a sort of interesting conundrum.
So you just have giant incandescent light bulbs there.
Well, you just feed it back in, you're just not paid for it.
Oh, is that what actually happens? It goes back into the grid anyway, you just don't get paid for it?
You're producing excess electricity?
Yeah.
Well, I should say, it only goes to the grid if you have like, you can spin it backwards, so to speak.
I'm not sure they'll come and install that other kind, that can slip it back.
Yeah, I don't think they're interested in that.
It's not, I bet you, it's not a doubt. It's not, the technical issue is what you pay for electricity. So, you're paying something when you buy it from your supplier that may be different from what PICO thinks their power is worth. And so a watt is not a watt, is I guess the point. So what is your watt worth when you give it back to PICO? Who knows?
Did you get that in a minute?
No. That sounds like a great slogan. What is your watt worth?
But Jim, for that's a serious question. When Narberth makes its arrangements to be part of the community aggregation, will people who participate not be able to sell solar back to that grid?
I mean
Wait, wait, let's let Jim answer the question.
I don't, not for the record, but it is at a scale where I don't think that's the case. I think it's a different type of exchange because it's a kilowatt per unit, or, sorry, it's per unit that is supplied. It's not generated by people. It's a third-party supplier.
Right, and that's the question, will the third-party supplier allow you to? I see, because PICO is a distributor.
PICO's a distributor.
Yeah, okay, so that's not a relevant question, all right. Does that trouble anybody?
It troubles me that there's a situation where there's a disincentive to create your own power if you can't sell it. That's what bothers me.
It's just our fault.
Hopefully, that will get rectified. It can't be the only community in the state that's dealing with it.
Right. I know, it's everywhere. I remember my neighbors complaining about that.
I think there might be more to this, though. Our summary may not be accurate.
I mean, is it also conceivable that as battery technology gets better and better, that you could have a battery in your house that can take that?
You know, that battery's called a Tesla.
Yeah, yeah, the problem
Well, at the moment it is, but I could also imagine, you know, this is not proposing the whole question about fossil fuels for our emergency generators. You know, in ten years, are we gonna have batteries in our basement that'll take the place of emergency generators?
The only question is, is this a big enough problem that we should reconsider our earlier recommendation? I'm not sensing anyone thinks it is. So.
Can I quickly just add a piece of information? Last summer, when we started due diligence on finding a third-party renewable agent that can, you know, do something at scale, we started with a group that did the Brooklyn Micro Grid, and I don't remember me talking about it, but they were working with a software where people in Brooklyn were generating their own renewable energy, the solar panels primarily, I'm guessing. But there was a technology hookup where it took all of the energy that was harvested, and if there was a surplus for that community, they could sell it wholesale to New York, which is what they ended up doing. So it was like removed from the distribution channels that existed and created basically like a new off-grid energy, community energy system. So it's out there.
Yeah, and that may be a factor of how New York regulates the energy markets. Okay, that's a maybe. Okay, so I'm not sensing we need to reevaluate our little zone code. So let's move on to the next topic, which is for green building. We, I just read you the recommendation, what we've approved, recommend the council for green building, which is that a new ADU should have fossil fuel problems. Question was, does this apply both to a newly constructed ADU and a version of an existing structure such as a garage to an ADU?
I think it should. I think the change in use triggers that, in my mind.
I I personally agree, but other thoughts are there. Because a lot of people built these garages illegal spaces above, hoping their rules would change. I feel sorry for them.
I don't know what you guys are talking about. You guys live a different town than me. I walk around, and you're like, oh, there's gotta be, that garage looks stupid. We covered this on last time, too.
So the question is, would the green building rules apply if someone had a garage of number level 11 or 12?
Yeah, but I think we just said that if you, yeah, I mean, it's a conversion to residence. It doesn't, presumably doesn't have a fossil fuel hookup now as a garage, and so it's not entitled to anyone.
Right, okay. I'm with that. Anyone?
Yes, I think also you could say, if the grandfathering is for fossil fuel hookups, and you could say, if you don't have one, on the off chance, or if you don't get a new one.
Right.
The garage wouldn't have a hookup anyway. It would get its gas from
The same building.
Right, so it wouldn't be such a big
It'd be very hard to police this.
Um, why?
I mean, it's the same, it's the same issue that we've talked about incessantly about, you know, it has to do with the level of compliance oversight, but it's no different than anything, getting a permit and doing what you say you're gonna do.
Do you need a CO for that?
Yeah, you definitely need a CO.
Is that a physical inspection?
Sure.
I don't think we're getting a debate about enforceability. We had a long, several-hour meeting at the three tables of our staff who reviewed these recommendations from that point of view. And this did not get back to us, that they thought it couldn't be enforced, so, good job.
So if a new ADU is not allowed, oh god, that's how it's written, right? So I think it is clear personally, but
Can I ask a quick question is, and I just, this might be a really dumb question, but if you're completely like renoing, if you had an, not ADU, but like a single-family structure, and you were taking the entire thing out internally and renovating the entire thing, would that type of a scenario require the hookups to change there, or would they be able to?
It's like an alteration level three.
No, we can't, we cannot, we cannot. So what we're talking about with these green building recommendations is something that essentially goes above and beyond what the building code requires.
Right.
The state law does not allow Narberth to go above and beyond what the building code requires for things like alterations. The reason this is tied to conditional use and to ADUs is because, in the solicitor's opinion, these are like bonus acts that the borough has, the bonus value that the borough is contributing. Bonus. And they're not related to the kind of ordinary use of the property. And so we can't constrain the ordinary use of the property and make those building codes tougher than the state allows. But for anything we're kind of giving through a discretionary approval or through something, the solicitor, for this purpose, interprets an accessory dwelling unit as like a benefit or a bonus, we can make these extra requirements. So we're very limited as to where we can apply extra requirements by state law. So, it doesn't apply to the level of construction. It applies more to
The fact that it's through a bonus.
The relationship with the construction to what normally these requirements
Gotcha. Then I just had one quick follow-up question on that, then. In terms of when you were initially, like, is the concept that the, that, how much of a burden is it to require that new pickup? Like, I guess like, if you're constructing an entirely new structure, it makes sense to me that it's probably, you're doing a lot of work. If it's just the conversion of an existing structure, how much of an additional burden is that? It may not be at all, I just, does anyone know?
Well, I think the conversion of these structures, of these existing structures, are gonna require entirely new systems anyway to come up with code. So to have it, you know, compliant with the green standards for the new systems, I don't think is particularly onerous.
Go.
Okay, so then we saw that it applies to both. And then, the last topic, we've got, well, there's two. The next one is bike parking quantities. So this is, we're moving away from green building into What's that?
This is the whole
So before we move to the salad, we're passing around, Chloe has given us for now, the current So after, we did recommend the approval of these, but in our minutes, we asked for a few small tweaks. We proved it contingent on some tweaks, and so Chloe's just given us the current version of these. I'm not sure we have enough to go around.
There's enough. I have some access here. And I think, Michael, I attempted to email it to you, so you might find it there.
Yes, thank you, I did get it, I appreciate it.
Before we tackle this, we do always pause at the end of agenda items and ask, is there any public comment on that topic? So is there any public comment on the topic of the green building code amendments that we were just talking about? Okay. Any comments in the chat or anything related to that? All right, so let's move on to, is there any changes related to the salad?
No chat.
The only issue really to bring to your attention is, unless you're gonna reread this and flag anything, we're not here to review anything we've already agreed on, except there was a public comment about the bike parking quantities that they may be excessive. So I wanted to review that with you and ask, since there was public comment about that, it's fair to come back to you and say, does this seem right? So the bike parking standards are on page six, and they move on, they're all on page six.
On five?
Pardon me. They're on page six. It's the quantity, table nine. Sorry, I reframed the table nine. So the question is, in long-term bicycle parking spaces, essentially, we require two per unit or one per bedroom. So like, if you have, like, if you're building one of those 550 square feet units we require in apartment buildings, you have to have two bikes for that. If you have a three-bedroom apartment, you have to build three bikes. If you're building a building with 10 of those, you have to have 30 bikes. Plus the short-term parking. So, which all have to meet certain definitions, which partially mean that they need to be inside somewhere. So the question is, is that, is that a tad high?
The average zone code that I've come across for long-term is typically one per unit for residential at its maximum. Because that factors in that not every resident is going to have a bike or utilize long-term bike storage, and other units may have multiple bikes that make up the difference.
So, before we continue, I'd like to ask the commission's dispensation to object spirit just in this conversation, as you were, because this is a matter that you helped us crack the first time around.
Right, well, can we base this on San Diego or San Francisco requirement? We wanted to go, frankly, we wanted to go kind of big on this, because a bike is increasingly popular in Narberth. If you look at what we required the Elm to build, which was much less years ago, they are overloaded, the bike racks are overloaded, and the owner actually told me they need to build more to accommodate all the bikes that are just at, their garage is not full of cars, you know, they So, whatever we required for the Elm, we asked them to put slightly too much parking based on, you know, the results, and far too little bike parking. I know several people who live at the Elm, I know someone who doesn't drive, who lives at the Elm, and she shops with our bicycle shopping group on Monday, and she drives right into the Elm, she has a cargo bike. I took a little video of her once, it's fantastic, you know, like, it's like exactly the kind of person we wanted, where we imagine what the Elm might be like. It's proof of concept, you know, people are not living an automobile lifestyle at the Elm. They're embracing
A little piece of Amsterdam, right here.
She's got one of those little transponders on her bike that opens the garage to the Elm. So, anyway, I, you know, obviously, I'm not a member of this planning commission anymore, but, you know, I would like to ask that bicycle parking requirements be kept optimistically high in a, if you build it, it will come philosophy.
Interesting. I was gonna ask if you would be agreeable to the minimum of two per unit or one per bedroom? Which means if you're building a little 550-foot efficiency studio, you don't have to provide one. But if you were, and in most, you'd have to provide two. So if you're building a three-bedroom apartment, you still have to provide two bike parking spots. Would that be acceptable? Or about a four or five-bedroom apartment, I don't think people are building those.
If you have a kid, you know, so the bicycle parking consumes a certain amount of space. Car parking consumes, like, it's like 10 bike parking spaces per car, at least. So if we're on, you know, I'd rather overshoot on bicycle parking. You can always convert it into a storage unit or something later, if you wanna change the rules as we're way overshooting. But the, I will also relate, so I went to a conference last week for the entire week in Washington DC. I never do ever have to drive. I take the train everywhere. And so I had this early morning meeting at DOT, which is really awkward to get to on transit, and I wasn't, didn't wanna get into an Uber, because I keep having kind of like not-so-great experiences with it. The, so I rented the Lime bike for the first time, because I didn't want to have a scooter, because I didn't have a helmet, and it's raining in February, January. Anyway, I rented a Lime bike, and it turns out they're electric, right? It's an electric bike. It's like practically a motorcycle. There's no throttle or anything, just when you pedal, the motor would come on. So I scooted all the way across DC in like record time in the rain, barely pedaling. I mean, it's gonna be a thing. It's gonna be a bigger thing than even it has been in the past, but that's what I'm thinking, so.
Is there a speed limit?
It's got a governor, right, so it's not gonna speed. I don't think I can go over like 15 miles an hour, but easy-peasy. So, not only the So not only the cargo bikes, but I mean, just, and I know, like, you know, if it was shared bikes, you wouldn't have this parking issue. But I, I just know for my own house, it's just a chore that the stupid house doesn't have a garage for. I don't have a garage. So now I work on my bike. It's annoying. And I think we should.
Okay, is there any sentiment to revisit these or should we stay on that? I'm, I'm not hearing any sentiment yet, but I want to give everyone a chance to weigh in.
Could this log have the long term bicycle parking for the automotive use? It's a thing that's. I don't know if that's, we have our comic relief, but I think it's great.
It looks clear because these are these are in the motor vehicle parking table, and so they're carried over here with a, an amount of around, but.
All right, I'm not hearing anyone who wants, wants to defend what is a bike parking spaces. But no changes, we did our job, we heard a comment, we addressed it, and we will see. Okay, so let's move on to the last topic. Michael, I'm sorry, you're up there, and sometimes, did you have any comments? You're in, you're in Austin, right?
Uh, no, no, I'm actually, I'm actually in Vermont right now.
You spend a lot, you spend a lot of time in Austin, where, wherever I go there, all I do is ride a bike around Austin. So what, from your point of view, where, where do you stand on this bike?
Oh, I, I love the forward looking kind of optimistic bike infrastructure scenario. Full disclosure, I don't own a car. I've never owned a car. I'm hoping to put, put off owning a car as far in the future as I can, so I'm very active transportation. I'm kind of one of the type of folks that, I think it was, I think it was Jim that was talking about that earlier in terms of that. So I'm very much supportive of the optimistic bike infrastructure. You know, if, build it, if, you know, build what you, you know, build what you want to see type of philosophy on that, so.
Build, build the change you want to see.
Build the change you want to see, okay. So the last question, which is not on here, is a question that comes from Kevin Walsh. Kevin, are you still on the call?
I'm still here, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I can't quite tell on the screen who's, who's around or what. But Kevin's, Kevin's question involves the interplay between our, our rules for no impact home based businesses and, and ADUs, and some questions arising. Kevin, why, why don't you tell us the questions you're getting and the kind of clarification you're seeking?
Yeah, so for the most part, I'm getting requests for site visits for people that have existing probably single car garages, and they're looking to convert it into maybe a home office. A lot more people are working from home since COVID. The way the code reads, though, it needs to be an ADU for the type of allowable height and area limits to be increased. So I guess this is just a, a policy issue where people are trying to make a home office on a second floor while maintaining, you know, the, the ground floor garage space, and that's not permitted by right right now. So they don't necessarily want the in-law suite, they don't want to rent out to an ADU. They just want to kind of use it as a separate home away from home office space, and right now that's not currently permitted.
Need to get away from their families. Hide in the garage.
Well, that's, don't we being optimistic here tonight? So the question, I guess what you're, from the emails back and forth, what I was sensing is people were thinking, oh, maybe I should just build an ADU and call it an ADU, but not occupy it as an ADU.
See, it has to have a kitchen as the thing, it's not a dwelling unit, right?
Right, they would build it with a restroom and a kitchen.
It's, it's really everything. It's, it's toilet, cooking, and sleeping. So it's really like separate, it doesn't need to be, it could be a studio in that sense, but you now you need major plumbing hookups, things like that. So the ADU would allow that. But I thought if we're allowing ADUs, I, I thought we would maybe want to allow the lesser density, less, lesser traffic, maybe home office on the same lot.
So, so like, so there's two questions here. One is, what happens if someone creates that ADU in the loft area of their garage? It doesn't use it, I mean, they create it by boat, there's a bathroom, a kitchen, whatever they need to have, but they don't use it that way. They just go there and do Zoom meetings all day long. Is that, is that an enforcement issue, I guess, or is that our intent? And then secondly, since Kevin is receiving those inquiries, should we reconsider these rules and also allow upper levels of garages to be converted to no impact home businesses?
Well, I, I think there's another issue, Kevin, and there's a life safety issue here. Because normally there's a fire separation between the garage and the dwelling unit. Now you have a dwelling, you have somebody above the garage, and if there is a gasoline fire in the garage, there's no way for that person to get out, correct?
Well, I think what they're proposing, what people are proposing is to, is to build an ADU that meets all the codes, but not use it as an ADU.
No, no, just to be clear, they're saying, I'd like the space that you would allow an ADU.
Right.
But all I really want is just a rec room or an office.
And I'm saying there are implications in building code that make this more complicated, that might first appear.
But as with the ADU, I would stipulate that any use we would permit would have to meet those codes. And it will be up to people to decide whether it's worth it or not.
It's a building code issue, a life safety question.
Yeah, that's different than a use as.
So for example, we allow.
Does the language of the building code address a situation like that?
What, a home office above a garage?
Well, some ancillary space to a garage that's not separated by the separation between the residential and the parking.
I think somebody just said it. I don't think that's really a policy issue. Like, that would, that would be triggered no matter what you guys decide. I mean, I would enforce those, you know, building code requirements regardless. I, I think the, the main issue is, if you have a one story garage right now, you could convert that to a home office right now. You could do that by right. It's really the people that are trying to get that second story, keep their garage, and have a separate kind of area. That's what I'm seeing the most of. Regardless of what the construction is and kind of orientation of a habitable space, I'm enforcing the building code regardless of how that plays out.
Look, Kevin, aren't there, there are very stringent egress requirements, right, for the, for the. For the, for the garage, and there's separation requirements, and they're pretty stringent. I mean, it's pretty difficult to accomplish this.
It would have to get a fire ready.
They would need, yeah, they'd need to make like a fire enclosure type of stair enclosure.
Yeah, exactly.
So just remind me, does the ADU ordinance increase the envelope that you can build in versus just a regular accessory structure?
So an accessory dwelling, accessory structure is limited to 16 feet and one story, but if it's an accessory dwelling unit, it's still limited to 16 feet, but you can have a second story.
So just don't change the massive.
So it's just adding the second floor. I'm just not changing the possible.
Adds a little.
What may change?
The armory.
If it's permitted for an office occupancy, in the fullness of time, it will become a dwelling unit.
And that's personal.
It'll be very hard to know when that moment occurs.
Well, they can always build the apartment and not rent it out or use it as an apartment. That's possible today. They just don't want to have to pay for the stuff they're not going to use and, you know, use that space more efficiently. I personally don't have a problem with it. I mean, I think that part of the goal was to also get maybe a little affordable housing component out of this. So doesn't do that right away, but to your point, maybe maybe in the long run, take this space and add a kitchen or something or bathroom. But I don't think that's very likely if you don't do it from the start, personally.
So are we asking, are you asking to change the definition of?
It's really section 500, I think it's like 602C. Everything is related to accessory dwelling units, not like accessory uses per se. So all of those allowable increases are under accessory dwelling units, not accessory structures.
So the question is, we did that for certain purposes because we want to encourage different kinds of housing stock and small housing stock, hopefully less.
Right, not necessarily an office space.
And all kinds of aging in place and all those things that we heard that are important. Now we have a request. People say, oh, we're letting people live there, so why can't I build the same thing and just work there?
You can.
The question is.
Build an accessory dwelling unit and move your typewriter in.
Right, so would that be an enforcement issue or?
No, it's, if you converted it into an accessory dwelling unit, you can use it for whatever you want.
I think that becomes cost prohibitive when you're asking people to start building it without asking for permission. So you'll have people that just put the floor in and ask.
Is that really happened already? It's never stopped people.
Right, but you have the people who are asking, so is there a way to, maybe restricted to the point of no plumbing, but meet required egress and fire separation? So you're establishing the correct fire safety provisions while eliminating any additional plumbing, which could lead to people providing illegal age use.
They have to pull a permit to do the work.
Right.
And that's where the, that's how it will be enforced. But like, if they pull a permit for an ADU that didn't build a bathroom, they will be compliant with the permit, I guess, right? Is the issue, if they were trying to get around the rule, otherwise Kevin's not gonna, the borough shouldn't give them a permit. It's not an ADU right now.
Right. I guess the, the, the question is strictly a use issue, right?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it's a use in the sense of the design of the structure has to have living unit requirements.
Right, and so it gets designed differently if you permit a different use.
And it's more expensive if it's an ADU.
Less expensive, it's an office.
I do think it's important we make the decision fairly soon because thinking down the line, if we don't make the decision and then we pass the green building provisions, what if somebody now wants a home office in one of those buildings? We don't require any green building provisions, and then they do convert it as, as a, as a kind of sneak around to that code provision.
I think, I think that, that can also be addressed too. The main, the main question seems to me is, I'm surprised, I didn't expect this would happen, but it did. So once we start allowing residential space over garage, we feel there is a benefit to the borough to allow other kinds of accessory uses over garage with the assumption that all life, safety, egress, and so forth could be met. Just from a policy point of view, does that land use make sense?
Well, also, what if we separated the issue of, I have a garage and I want to put a loft in it from, uh, what am I trying to say, like, the second story issue? Like, you can put an accessory building on your lot.
Right, you can put it on the ground.
It just has to be one story.
Right.
One floor.
Right.
We already can do that.
Right.
It's just this limited case of conversions of garages, probably. I don't think we should allow a two story home office.
Okay, what's the reason for that?
I mean, there's not really a great reason. I don't know what, I don't know why we're not allowing this to be in there.
You mean a two story home office, first and second floor, right?
Yeah, like if, you know, I build a new, a new accessory building as my hangout.
The, the, the one thing that's, I think restricts that is that John Walco suggested that we also implement the, the low impact home based business requirements for that, which would restrict kind of the area in which you could occupy an accessory building for that use.
Do you have the area?
25%.
25% of the main structure.
Well, so, I mean, unless you're, you know, the accessory dwelling unit is 1600 square feet, unless your main building is 6400 square feet or even 3200, you'd be limited to one of those two floors. And there's no employees allowed, no employees are allowed there, so.
I think the argument against this, just to put it on the table, is that, you know, it's the argument that, that a two, you know, a two, when two story garages start popping up everywhere, you know, neighbors might get annoyed by the, you know, the, the extra, the extra development in, in the backyards.
But the dimensions are the same as what's permitted for a garage already.
Well, that's true, except that there's no incentive to build garages like that. What we'd be doing by allowing things to happen with second floor, you're creating a lot more incentives.
I don't see, I don't see, like, if you, you know, yeah, you could put a loft over your garage. It's not like it's a big, I mean, I don't see a way of garages being built for that reason, personally. I could be wrong. In fact, I would think the use case for building a new structure is more likely with, it's either, it's either your, uh, a home office. I have a classmate from planning school, that's his, he just started a company that does like modular home offices and things like that, that truck puts it in your backyard, you know, it's like straight out of Dwell magazine. It has, you know, it's this beautiful little structure, so they just.
Tiny office.
Pretty good. Yeah, and it was all, anyway, they look great, but, and they're spending. But it's either, you know, some people like that, having that, that structure, or it's this conversion of your existing accessory building to be something more practical, right? And preferably something income producing or a home, you know, someplace to put someone who wants to live there. So I don't see this, I mean, I could be wrong.
I would, I, I, although I was trying to posit the argument against this, I think I would generally be in favor of this. And the reason is because we've generally been in the pride that families have been flow. There, there are times when you need more space, and we've been very sympathetic to people adding on to their houses as their families grow, have another kid, we want you to stay in our birth, we want you to have your house. Well, building a home office is another way of providing more space for your household and your families. Maybe, maybe you don't have room in your.
You don't have a home office because you have kids in all bedrooms.
Yeah, and maybe that's what we like.
And you better have kitchen table for three years and counting, but I'm not counting.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe it's sort of inconsistent with the notion that we want to do what we can, make things flexible for people to stay in place as, as long as they can and not be pushed out because they don't have enough space. We mean, the goal there really overall is to promote stability in our neighborhoods by, by trying to give families every opportunity to stay as long as they can and not have to move because they don't have space, because we, we think that stability supports things like the churches and the sports clubs and, and all those volunteer groups and the things that make us what we are in this town. So I kind of take it from small to big, but I kind of feel like maybe allowing people to build offices is more upside than downside. Just promotes the sort of flexibility we want to have to allow people to grow in place.
To put restrictions in place to prevent someone from putting in, say, everything necessary for a dwelling unit? Could you put limitations on, you know, you're allowed a toilet and a sink, but not a full bathroom or?
See, we do allow a dwelling unit now.
But that would be, but like classified in those two different things. So you're either looking to do a dwelling unit, which has X stipulations and requirements, or you're looking to do accessory space, which has to meet these requirements instead, so that.
It's a new way to handle it.
Yeah, yeah. It's just a regular accessory use.
The problem with that is eventually, somebody's going to use it as a dwelling unit. It's not going to be the residential code requirements. I don't know how you, I don't know how you deal with that. You know, whether that's, again, an enforcement issue, and we're not talking about that here. But I, Kevin, I see you nodding your head, yes, and you, and you can see it happening, can't you? Somebody will, will take a toaster oven there, they'll start living in there, and you kick in all those other issues with it being residential now.
Yeah, it's not really an enforcement issue, it's really more of a legal issue, to be honest. We've, I mean, when I was in the city or whether in our birth, I've seen situations where it was a home office or an accessory use, and there's no really clear definition of when it becomes definite, uh, residential. And, you know, so when do we really, can we, you know, require the residential requirements? That's really difficult.
Right.
Nice question.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is just like a matter of semantics or something altogether different. So I just have to be naive and ask the question. But if we were talking about a carriage house, how would the conversion of a carriage house be different from the conversion of a garage? Aren't they essentially like the same thing?
Aren't they essentially like the same thing and carriage houses have become like synonymous with accessory?
Do we have carriage houses?
Define carriage house.
I would call me a garage a carriage house.
It's without a garage.
And I can.
Like a one-story building?
Well, historically, the carriage house is like where the horses were parked.
It's a guest house.
Well, people.
Well, no.
To mean the latter thing. Well, originally.
But no, in our birth, what does it mean?
Right. Well, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, trying to understand it in concept, like, is this really about like, I don't know, I'm trying to understand the semantics of the argument, I guess. Um, because historically, a carriage house was for trans, your transportation. But now a carriage house is ever, because we don't ride horses anymore for tran, transport. Um, they're now just living spaces, dwelling units, habitable.
Right.
Um, so now, let's say we have the same concept. We have a garage and now everyone's riding bikes and no one drives a car anymore. So, because we're being optimistic about that. So let's play that out and say like, what happens to the garage? Are we looking at like conceptually the same type of conversion or?
Well, yeah, I would say we are. The difference is a carriage house typically had residential quarters for groom. It had a tack room. It probably had plumbing because, because you were, you were dealing with all the needs of the animals that lived in the carriage house. So it was generally bigger. The, the, uh, the staff, sort of, my staff, they lived upstairs. Right? Because they had to be there 24/7 to make sure the carriage was ready for.
It's the grooms.
For the groom, yeah. The groom is the word I'm saying.
I don't want, I really want to try and simplify this.
Can I, can I?
Let me just put this, put this in a simple context. Before we pass the ADU, you could convert a one-story garage into any kind of allowable accessory use that did not include residential. You could turn it into an office. You could turn it into a art studio. You could turn it into a storage unit. Um, you could not, you could have a garage that was 16 feet tall, but you could not have anything at upper level, could only be on the ground level. That's the way things work before we introduced the ADU. When we introduced the ADU, when that was passed, it changed two things. One is you could have, you know, and, and the assumption always is you're meeting all fire safe, safety codes. You could have a, a dwelling unit in, in, in the garage, you can convert it to a dwelling unit. Or you could, you could add an extra storage to a garage and have a dwelling unit above it. That, that's what changed. So as of now, you can still, if you have a one-story garage, you can convert it to an office, a studio, a horse park, a dwelling.
As long as you can get a parking.
And then if you have a one-story accessory building that's used for any other use besides residential, you can add another floor as long as it's 16 feet maximum and have a residential unit above. That's the only time you can have second story occupied space in an accessory structure is for accessory dwelling unit. That's the situation. It's a simple question. The simple question is, do we feel as a policy matter, that it's also desirable to allow other accessory units on the second floor?
Other uses?
Other accessory uses, yes, in the second floor, not just residential. That's the simple question. And we're assuming all health, life, safety codes will be met. That whatever it is that uses, it will be built, whatever codes apply to it. From, is that a desirable thing to allow people to start adding stories or building two-story garages with the upper levels used for other accessory uses besides residential? That's the question. I think the arguments, we've heard arguments for it. It adds flexibility for families. We've, we've heard concerns that people might build to a certain, uh, for a certain kind of use, like say, office use. Uh, and then surreptitiously use it for some other uses, like residential use. Um, since we allow residential use anyway, I'm really not even sure.
It's a code violation. It's a code enforcement issue.
But I'm not really sure what the issue is. It's actually not, because we would allow.
It was being a legal, a legal, you know, housing unit. It wasn't ever set up as well.
Yeah. So that's like, that's sort of like my pluses and minuses I've heard, so. I guess I want to take a quick poll because I, I don't want to.
And to talk to that last point about illegal housing units, you could do that out of one-story accessory building.
That's correct.
Doesn't, you know, and sleep in it, so it doesn't matter. It's just the stairs. So I, I think we should allow, I, I agree with Todd about the flexibility, I mean, for being able to create a home office.
So a quick poll, where do you stand? Where do you stand?
I'm okay with it. I mean, the building code is going to swing you big time. If you're storing your car underneath any other use, it's going to be a whole different ballgame.
How do you feel about it?
I agree. I think it's good to do.
How do you feel?
I agree.
I think so.
Michael?
Yes, I agree. Flexibility is a good thing.
So Kevin, what we'll do is make a recommendation. We put in motion through analysis of our various interplay between the housing code or multi, the, the building code, zoning code, the notion that these upper level spaces could also be used for any other legal accessory use.
Is there a reason not to just change the, so that the maximum stories of accessory buildings is just two?
We will look at that. We're not going to engineer a code to make that.
Okay.
That may be the simplest way to do it. But there's interplay between historic code, green code, building code, zoning code, which we're not going to ban tonight. That's, we can figure that out.
And if there's two floors, I want a pole so I can slide down, but I have to use the stairs.
Yeah, I'm talking to Kevin about that one.
Okay, so that's what all matters before us tonight. Um, so we'll move to public comment. You should be very patient. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, I just wanted to listen.
Okay, I wanted, you came late, so I'd like to say something to you. Um, I don't know when the 714 is going to come up again. I don't know if it'll be next month, month after. Um, when it came up last month, I asked Cindy Rickards to try and let the neighbors know. She's the council member who lives near you.
Cindy Rickards?
Yeah, I asked her to try and let folks know in the neighborhood.
Oh, it did come up last month?
Yes, it did.
At, at this meeting?
Yes.
Oh, and none of us could come, okay.
Yeah, and the problem is we only set our agendas a day or two in advance. We were always like scrambling until the last minute. Is it ready? Is it on? Is it, you know, and it, it just sounds weird to you, I'm sure, but really, I spent a whole week last week getting our agenda ready. So the best thing to do is to check our agenda on Friday or Monday. But what I was going to say is on the back, do you have an agenda there?
No, I got, no, no.
There's one over there in the beginning. If you send me an email to this address, I'll do my best to let you know when it's coming up.
Okay, that, I'll definitely do that.
I can guarantee it'll be 100% fail-safe, but I will try.
That's okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Because you asked, how can we stay informed?
Yeah.
And it's not always an easy process to follow.
Yeah, it's hard to even like look at the agenda. I don't know what I'm, it's hard for me to get into the website or the agenda.
Send me an email the week before a meeting and say, is this project?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that'd be great. And is it true that there, they were saying, my neighbors were saying, there is not going to be any commercial, um, uh, units on the 714 property?
Uh, currently, the current ideas that were shared last month at our meeting
Oh.
did not include commercial on the first floor.
I'll have to look at last month's.
And I think, I, if you. For the meeting, yeah, for the new building. At the meeting last year, we encouraged the person who's proposing us not to do that. So, and he came back with a reason, he's not doing that. So, but it was not, it was not an official application. It was not an official submission. He just brought these ideas to talk about.
I wish that had been here.
So even watch the YouTube, it's not.
Oh, yeah.
If you go to Norbert Civic, Norbert Civic Association, and I, I realize we don't do this on the agenda, I will start putting that link so people can find it, find the meetings. And you can watch the YouTube whenever you want, like, I'm, like, set up one by, you know, get some popcorn, whatever, like you want. Drink to watch a planning permission meeting. And then you can send your comments into this email anytime.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So, much in adjourned?
No, so first, she wants to say anything, but there's been somebody on.
I'm sorry.
Meeting.
Is there any, um, public comment online? Looking at the screen like it's going to talk to me.
With anyone unmute.
Is, is Kevin still there?
Yeah, Kevin's there.
Kevin?
I'm sorry.
Wait, 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 wait. Let's see, is there anyone on, uh, who wants to make public comment? Okay, we'll call public comment close.
Just a quick question, Kevin.
I was stopping, do you want to stop the recording?
Can we adjourn the meeting before you ask a question so we can, others who aren't interested can go? Much in adjourned?
Zoomed.
Okay, let's keep the zoom on so you guys can talk. Are all in favor of adjourned?
I.
I propose. Okay, all right, you guys can continue.
I just had a quick, that, that building on Forest that had scaffolding put up to repair the torches, doesn't look like they've done anything there in weeks. Do you know what's going on with that? Here, you can.
Supposedly they had a, um, a cha, a change order in on the materials they were using. They were just replacing like the railings. Um, and when they went to replace the railings, like the vinyl, um, a lot of their like posts, the columns, vertical columns were dry rotted. And it got a little more involved than they anticipated, so they had to like kind of pause the replacement of vinyl railings due to like that. So they have like a structural engineer going out there to make sure they don't need to provide temporary shoring or anything like that.
Okay, yeah, I kind of suspected that it was a lot worse than I thought it was.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, Michael and Jennifer, we hope you'll come back.
Night, y'all.
Night, Kevin. Get to any reason why you didn't.
I'll see y'all.